Talk to Kim about it, but I just need to, I think it needs to go out in the water for...
Is that what Kim's question?
Yes.
Okay. Can you make a note to bring that up with him? Back to me either, you fix it so it's useful or you take it out, right?
It's pond silting in so much, it's just...
The pond level is higher than it used to be when it was working.
Right.
Since the dam has been repaired. Haven't used it.
We'll follow up with that one. Bobby, you had a DPW question?
Yes. Villas Pool. Change goes with the project.
Do you have it? Where is it?
Yes, we told Steve's in here.
Look, right underneath. It's like right underneath.
He said we have it.
Okay, well...
Back in the pump house.
If the first day it's not raining, I'll come up and just hook it up. Just leave, give it to somebody so they know where it is.
There you go.
Okay.
And then, all they can do is walk across the dam, or make them walk across the dam to do it. But that matters, it's really simple.
Well, we can't get across the dam, there are other ways of updating the book. Yeah, but I've been coming to these meetings, talking about it, saying we have the change.
Yeah, well, we just got the...
He's done by June 1st, so I'm...
We just got the log off the thing, and...
Did Bobby come down here and...
I'm sure, I'd be afraid of that.
No, it's not bad.
No.
Bobby, you've been like...
I'm afraid of it.
I gotta come up and check on the plant.
I'm not worried about the property. Not without a roof.
Inside your chair down here. Are you aware that when, I just wonder if you're aware. Are you aware that when David works at Bottoms Pool, he charges the pool money time?
Yes, that's what he told me.
Are you aware of that?
Nope, because I was told that Villas Pool, basically, the trust is to take care of the buildings, and it's also to be, to take care of programs. We are taking the responsibility of inside on the grounds. That belongs to the town. The town is actually responsible for all the grants.
We have never...
I know you haven't done it, and you probably aren't aware, but if you read the trust, that's what it says.
Anything that will come from the pool is all we take for... And that's what we were told to do.
And I, yes, and I understand that. But, it's not the way the trust reads.
Do you have a copy of the trust?
You guys have a copy of the trust.
Have you read this one?
Yes, I have.
Would you like me to read it to you?
Not really.
I'm making a lot of... I'm making a lot of...
Because we have a lot more to handle.
The 13th, we do, but it's not that long, he's only going to carry that. "I give the device that the town of Allison, Manhattan, the property, not the Villas Farm, consistent with the Villas Pool. Lance, routing that pool comprising about twelve acres, and that property being bought down the north, et cetera, et cetera." And then he says, "I also give and bequeath to the National Team Bank, et cetera, the seventy-five thousand dollars" which is in the trust. And now you get down to the good part. "To invest and reinvest the same and certain securities that are prescribed by the law, St. Anthony's investment trust funds, and to pay over the net income therefrom semi-anually to a committee, which is you, appointed by the town, which is us. Such income to be applied to maintain the pool and buildings on the property above demise, and to employ necessary caretaker's labor and music in connection thereof." That money can be spent for all the things that David is doing for the pool. And apparently, from what I understand, David breaks his timeout. I don't know how it's handled in the office. Apparently, it goes through and the treasurer takes it out of the Villas Pool, or does he take it out?
Well, he will get something at the end of the year, so we'll just say, "We didn't do that." So we will keep track of all the hours that David has submitted, and highlighted those.
Has this been going out for some time, that way?
Well, this is the first year, so Villas Pool has asked us, as far as all the mowing and everything, this last year it wasn't like that. So I asked Linda, when David brought the time cards in, would the Villas Pool highlighted how best to deal with that, since we do not have a Villas Pool line in here to take out. So we had to take it out from the highway, copy the cards, and we'll keep them separate, and we'll give those to Hans.
So I guess my...
Except for Hans, except for everything's gonna have to be signed through you guys.
Sure. So she's already...
What are you talking for money in a year? This is stupid.
Not a lot.
It's not...
Why are we worried about bringing it out?
It's process, that's all. Because she, you know...
It is...
The committee needs to know that when they ask the highway department to do work for them, that it's being charged to their house this year.
It's how they have it funded for it.
It's nitpicking. If we just...
It's still a town park. We don't have the money to do all that.
What's the big deal if it comes from the town?
Regardless of the trust, but the park, the park is an asset of the town. And they're authorized to pay for maintenance and like?
Yeah. You know, I don't care where it comes from.
We know that, we know that.
Just a minute, the word authorized, and that's what was talked about before. So that's why we're taking care of inside.
I don't know what the inside is, if you have a Villas Pool...
The dam park is, we shouldn't be charged for any of that.
Well, it's not in, that's not in here.
Okay. Inside, when you cross... Okay, when you cross the, cross the bridge...
Yeah.
We take care of it. We did ask about the big parking lot back there.
But that's who you, that is expendable money out of the trust if you wish this to be.
We are taking care of all of that inside. Outside, the parking lot, all along there, garbage, things that need to be mowed. That's where we expect the town to take alongside the road. We should not be charged for that.
No, I think what we've...
I don't mind doing it Bobby, it's just we don't have...
We don't have a budget either.
Well, that's the problem, isn't it? We don't have a line item to charge it.
And it's, it's the biggest historical thing to have parked in this area.
Right.
Oh, is there a comment about that?
Yeah, let me hop in here. Let me hop in here. I, I don't think, last year, I don't remember ever breaking this stuff out. I don't remember there being a transfer from...
We cheated last year, we had volunteers that went up there, I'm sorry that...
That's not cheating.
Not wrong, that's, that's great, that's a community taking care of itself without governments screwing it up. So really, I, I think for the amount of hours, it just doesn't really matter. I like the deline, I've always liked the delineation saying that what's out here is the town's responsibility, and what's in here is the trust, the trust and the board of directors' responsibility.
I have no problem with that either.
I don't either, I think it's...
We don't have a line item budget for what's out there.
No, other than we have DPW wages and DPW...
Which means you can't break out.
We can consider the parks and recreation.
Yeah.
It's not in there. It's, when Linda put together the estimate for parks and recreation, I can assure you she put nothing in there for Villas Pool.
Well, I don't remember seeing detailed breakouts for mowing anywhere. Maybe there were.
Oh yeah, for parks and recreation, it's in there.
Are you talking about the budget?
No, it's dollars.
Dollars for mowing?
Yeah.
Yes. Is there a breakout of those?
Yeah.
That lady had that.
Breakout for that.
Well, that's not...
It doesn't show up on your master sheet, but when she developed that budget last year, she, she went through all the things that she wants to spend money on for that particular budget in Villas Pool, and not in there.
Well, maybe she shouldn't be developing the budget.
That, you can take care of that next year.
Yeah, I can see why.
All right, you, because evidently we didn't ask enough questions last year. So, neither here nor there, the long and the short of it is, is I think we can see how we get through this year, right? Because the money gets billed to us, and then potentially, at the end of the year, according to this seems like a change, then we would go to the Villas Pool Trust and say, "We did X amount of dollars of work," and you would reimburse it.
The money may not be, I don't know how much the trust is gonna get.
We can't, we can't reimburse.
Or the...
We don't have the money to do that.
Right.
We're looking at every...
We're all roadside mowing.
We have other stuff. It's roadside. Why would you expect us to be taking care of that?
Because you're using it, you're the one, it's...
So what, we're part of the town?
Nobody said you weren't.
Okay.
All I'm saying is that...
We charged the library for mowing around it.
All I'm saying is that the trust left you money to take care of your, maintain the labor, the caretaking and all of that, and that's part of your use.
No, it isn't.
Nobody else but Villas Pool parks in that parking lot.
Really, okay.
That's okay, Dave. Have you ever mowed that in the past? Ever, ever?
Villas, way back, Villas Pool always paid me personally to mow everything out in the back of Villas Pool, big fields.
That was my next question, that one.
And the parking lots, and the parking piece across the road. I did it with my own tractor and my old dog. But then the supplement said, "You don't have a million dollar insurance policy, so you are not to mow nothing." So I have not mowed nothing. My old mow guy, Brian Lane, forgot my son to mow it. But, and since then, I can't find anybody with that kind of insurance that will mow. They just don't have it to make three hundred dollars. I'd be more than happy to mow it.
Well, is there a way of compromising here? Because being that there's a field up top, and that is within the compound of Villas Pool, then Villas Pool, I don't know if they have a hand mower to mow that, we do say.
Do you know what we should do? We have a mower, we have people that mow, we just have a mower.
Right. And if we can solve this out as far as...
I wasn't prepared for the line item to charge it again.
Right.
Parks and recreation. It's not... It's gonna take him an hour or two a week.
Right.
Right, it hasn't been funded at...
That's okay, well, I'm questioning, I'm gonna question, I'm gonna save this out.
At the end of the year, your bottom line budget is what you worry about. Next year, worry about that line item, put it in there.
Exactly, and that, my concern is, is I need to look at that estimate for Parks and Recreation mowing, to see if it's, if it's accurate. And right now, are we over or under on Parks and Recreation mowing? That we can answer while looking at that. We should be way under.
Way under.
Which means we can probably absorb that, barring a, uh, three months of rain.
Last year was under too.
Yeah. I think we cut it back, and we're still under.
It's not like that field has to be mowed or recharged, is it?
Uh, in June, in June of that...
With all the things that are going on, yes.
Yeah, I, yeah, my feeling is, is that we've got money budget for Parks and Recreation, it ends up being part of the settlement, and if that...
Okay, then you couldn't be breaking a timeout for Villas Pool.
Agreed.
Did you hear that?
Or, you can break it out and say, "Build it to DPW, or to Parks and Rec."
I don't care, just tell me how you want it done.
So I think we can just do that, on the backend, Kelly.
I'm just doing it the way I'm supposed to.
We're gonna bill against Parks and Recreation. And we won't build the Villas Pool Trust for, I think what we all agree is pretty much a town responsibility. Or at least I think that.
Well, it's a town privilege to be able to help out at Villas Pool. It's not, it's not, I'm, it's not, it's not that they can't do it themselves, if they have the budget. And when you do, you're put this out to whatever issues that can be on this list as well.
Agreed. All right. That was all we had there?
Well, only one little observation. The reason, the reason that Parks is only thirty percent is because we're only two weeks into the mowing.
Exactly, only twenty percent.
I got thirty. Oh, the whole section.
I'm not sure I've got a budget up here.
But we are gonna go ahead and...
We are just looking for David's budget.
And we also, we also didn't have anything for winter, to, for that.
That helps.
That helps get it down here.
Yeah, we have one more thing. What about, um...
We'll get back to you, we're gonna go ahead and finish up David's budget review.
Okay, that's fine. The Fuzzy Brothers.
Oh, I thought, I put a green here in front of these guys, this, you need somebody, what you wanted to do, five to six thousand dollars. Fuzzy Brothers, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
But how much did we pay them to do the, the projects?
I think with eighteen.
And not even eighteen, what are we talking about? Now we have, that was in the fall.
I am for having them come. I'm for having them come and clean it out.
I'm also for putting in a preventive maintenance plan, where we open that thing every like three months or four months.
Well, what happens if they don't have any money out there that can do that?
For Dave.
That means David's gotta do it.
I know how to do it. I used to do it my myself.
Well, I know you used to do it.
But the town owns the dam.
I agree.
They do.
So, that's why David got stuck with it.
Right, like six foot old unit, on the ground, where...
All right. Is he gonna try to add to the regulation, Parks and Recreation?
David, can you be open?
We can, we can run it around.
Okay. But you can check all of ours. It's open.
It's open now.
It's open.
But he goes and cleans the dam out?
It's blocking our gate out?
Yeah, but I thought that log is...
And...
No, no, it's not plugged with logs, it's plugged with mud.
He codes everything with the hours.
So how do you do that? We do now? Still have a permit.
Yeah, so it owns Parks and Recreation with DPW, yes, for that. So what about that?
So you can...
Okay, that can just be cleared, so we know.
It doesn't go by...
And it's all gonna go across the side.
And for over fifteen hours, Parks and Recreation will have to...
So we have a little compromise.
We don't have...
Well, we were talking about the Fuzzy Brothers, and getting them in there to clear out the, and the estimate is five to six thousand dollars.
Yes, that goes.
You can take that on Parks and Rec.
Parks and Rec, wait. I'll take another gravel. I think the gravel's already, we got the gravel. He's bent the gravel, I'm afraid. They're coming, they're coming to crush the end of this month. So, uh...
Yeah, I mean, my, my concern is, we're eleven thousand dollars over on Forest Park. Yep. And we're probably not done with that, right?
Yep.
Now we've got more coming in. Well, everybody else is looking pretty good. That's just concerning. So I don't know if I'm ready to, let's see where we're at on gravel. Why eleven thousand? Actually, let's just do that.
Yeah, well, it costs you more if you don't do it. Because you've already spent how much off the warrant article, and it's...
It doesn't matter if I don't have the money to do it. And I can't go over, that's, that's the problem. Well, if you take seventeen thousand, or excuse me, eleven thousand off of that, that leaves David with somewhere around thirty-three thousand in gravel.
And don't forget, I have to save ten of that gravel, just in case, because I gotta put pipes in.
Yep.
So I, I can't spend all of that gravel line on gravel.
Yeah, we already spent about thirty thousand for crushing. What was that for crushing?
You ever spend anything for crushing this year?
Oh yeah, we signed a, when you were away on vacation, we signed a water soul. We haven't spent...
We haven't spent...
That's on Covert's...
So we got a contract out, to, to... Oh, for crushing, yeah, yeah. But that's, is that part of your gravel?
No, that doesn't show up on here yet.
Bob, the spending part has to come out. We have the sand and the gravel running in and out.
Yeah, and sand hasn't been touched yet. So between the two, say we've got eighty thousand dollars minus eleven thousand dollars for fires, we're gonna move out of that into somewhere else, sixty-nine thousand dollars, and then we're proposing taking six thousand dollars out of that.
For the cleaning, cleaning.
So you got sixty-three thousand dollars worth for sand and gravel before we break that for more forest fire money that's gonna come out. Have you met any predictions on how much more is coming in, or... Well, look to these guys, do you guys have a feel, or...
Well, I'm sure he has quite a few that feels upon him.
There'll be a Kim question after we...
Yeah.
I, I support, absolutely support the idea of getting that gate open, getting Fuzzies in here.
And getting it functional.
Getting it functional, and damn, darn it, we're gonna open it frequently, so this doesn't...
Well, he's the one that's...
Yeah, understand that that would become part of the DPW maintenance, or Parks and Rec maintenance type program. So we don't get any of these...
Because we're not gonna have the ladies doing it, and we're not gonna have Steve.
Yeah, and I don't wanna go wait every year and spend another six thousand dollars if we could've prevented it.
But, but the other thing is, if you have one, every rain, hard rain, in that gate, don't make any difference, it was open to shut. The stuff comes out, it drops in front. You're done. You just don't understand that, that's a fact of nature, there ain't nothing, you can move out of it.
Steve, can you hear what he's saying? Because I hope you guys handle this right.
Well, Daryl, this is all because it has, hadn't been done for fifteen years, so we have a whole backup, so I think David's probably about right, because, you know, there's so much backup that's gonna feed in, where normally it's just in the spring that it feeds in, so if we left open, it would never...
Would a brack, brack help?
No, no, it's not brack. Yes, it wasn't David, you haven't seen brack going through there. All you see is dirt, you see small pieces, but nothing, never plod it.
What would happen if we left it open for a year?
It is.
Would we clear that backlog, you know?
It has been left open since, when did we open it? Well, when the Fuzzy Brothers were up there last year.
Actually, is it open now?
It is open.
Yeah.
There you go, it's open now.
Yeah, been left open since the Fuzzy Brothers were there.
It's a bigger question, but probably we oughta get a group of people together, and maybe some people who know something about it a lot, and find out what it would take for permits to get that next year.
That's not possible. A cage?
A cage. We sold four hundred and fifty thousand dollars on a fire chart that we did not need.
Five hundred, no.
About thirty years ago, with the help of Royal Homes, I had contracted the Army Corps of Engineers to come in here and do that for a summer project, and all we had to pay for was their gas, and allow them to bivouac up on the hill. But that year, the governor decided you wanted fire parts, so they canceled after protest.
I don't think we're gonna solve the question the Villas Pool gave tonight, but I would really like to get somebody to take a closer look at all these things, and a screen, a rack.
I, I think that we have something better to clean the gate. You definitely need something just to surround that gate, to keep the big stuff away from it. The silk, you can pick the gate up and down, it's the big stuff that drives into it like this, that you can't pick it up. Because there's, there's ears that come out on the gate, and when the logs come into them like this... You can't pick it up.
Right.
I don't know, if it got low enough to really put a gate up, did it get it? When you, when we drained it last time?
Wasn't that part of the original kit?
Originally, last year, there was...
The warrant article?
Yeah. Yeah. Well, see, the, the reason why they took it out was they were afraid that if something else stuck in there, up against the gate, it would not be able to clean it out, wouldn't it have something in, in front of it? Trash gate, or whatever you wanna call it.
But there wasn't.
But if there was there, and they were back in there cleaning, you couldn't get up against the gate.
But I don't think it was, I don't think the water level was low enough, long enough, for them to put the gate there.
All right, let's not get back to your move.
I did.
That we, uh...
Ask Fuzzy Brothers.
Ask Fuzzy Brothers to...
To clean out the trash and open the gate?
Yeah.
And take the money out of gravel? That would be very nice.
Well, is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
It's all done then.
All in favor?
No, we haven't voted. Well, yeah, but you'll be two in favor, and... Don't matter, we're discussing. Are you a pro?
Yes. So all in favor?
I'm on the north here, I'm on the... We're wired here.
Okay, well, before we vote then, I just don't know that we have the money. I didn't look at the...
You said we could take it out of gravel.
I did, but I haven't looked at this entire budget, I haven't got an estimate from the town.
We'll do it next week then, that's...
Yeah, put it on the table for next week.
I'm fine with table, I just, I can't, if I can spend money, I don't know what we have.
Well, I don't wanna spend money we don't have either, but you said we have money in the gravel.
Well, I, I listed what we have in ground.
I also just asked Bobby when her next wedding and stuff was, because we don't want the pool empty at that time, I'm sure.
That's not correct.
We got, yeah, we gotta try to work around all this stuff.
Well, remember in July, Villas Pool days on the line.
All right.
If you guys didn't want to do it till fall, I wouldn't care.
We can't have it here.
You didn't want to do it till fall.
There's a light there, and there's, there's ways, everything can get in.
Yeah, let's, let's table discussion on this until another time, but I would like to say is, if there are...
Are we still gonna allow swimming? The ponds, well, but just lots of stuff, that's what happens if you go...
So, oh, seriously?
Then we can start some money for that. But four hundred, but six thousand bucks would be pretty cheap. That does a lot. It will be, six grand.
He doesn't have foolish. He told me we don't have... I didn't say we didn't have it.
You don't know.
I don't know what our whole budget was like, and I don't wanna get an estimate on the fires. That concerns. We got another eight, ten thousand dollars.
We're gonna have a higher current testament on that, and hopefully...
He was...
We were talking about tabling it.
You know, the, uh, put the word out to Kim, that we're looking for a, a good estimate on that.
Since it's not here, he's got my total credit to put in line.
Oh, well, there we go, the fire.
Perfect.
All right.
So we'll table?
Table, yeah, discuss it on whether to get Fuzzy in here.
That's right. I'm gonna go on to that.
All right, you got a vote over in the corner?
Yeah, I did. I might come back, you're, you're the good one there.
All right, and I would like to get a group together who knows something about this dam, something about the gate. I don't know, Steve, would you be interested in working with David, and maybe getting a couple people together to...
Yeah, I think get the, get the lawn, lawn diet experts.
We're lawn bosses here.
And maybe one of the guys.
He's sitting back there and he says, oh yeah, get lawn, poor guy.
That's how we all ended up just not being able to get with it.
Right.
So we'll see.
Can I, can I leave it up to you guys to sort of self-organize?
Until next week anyway.
Yeah, all right. All right, then let's get into the David's budget and go through his line item. All right. And we are over fifty percent through the year. Uh, DPW administration is at forty-one percent. The closest thing to being over budget looks like is the telephone. Everything else is under budget. Is that specific for them?
Forty-six is actually an magic number.
Forty-six, thank you. I guess it would be, I just round things off or whatever, most times. All right, uh. Part-time wages are at seventy percent. I don't know how that goes yet. Time nice and long.
Equipment rental, that was because I used trucks over there to get fall, that was.
Right.
That's, there shouldn't be no more.
And that was, and that was protruding anyways.
Yes. Got trucks.
I gotta ask, what was that oil trail going into the highway garage?
That comes out of the front of the motor.
Where you're going down the.
When it gets hot.
Oh yeah.
When it gets hot and it's hot outside, it will blow off. Cause it, it can't get enough air into it.
It overheats.
Yes.
You need an oil filter.
And it just.
Okay, that's what that.
Long term?
Yeah.
Your maintenance is low and your repairs are high.
Yep.
So you would be spending more money on maintenance so we, uh, don't have so many repairs?
Um, no, that's not the problem. The, the tires are in there, um, Kim loss.
Yeah, that's tires, right?
Yeah. With, uh, fifteen, whatever.
Three hundred dollars, but yeah.
But, you know, that's cheap compared to what everybody else has paid for. So, cause it's all government and stuff coming out of our mind.
Actually, the vehicle maintenance is off, cause there's only twenty-six percent of the budget.
It's actually good.
He should be commended for keeping under budget.
That's cause we have a snow. Yeah, yeah, uh, mild winter helps that a lot. Uh, salt and fluoride, we've been doing our purchases. I don't see anything else there. Overall, it's thirty-three percent for forty-six percent of the way through the year.
Lot, you gotta factor in that we're buying sand and gravel there shortly, so that's gonna throw that all off.
Oh, we're not buying gravel.
You've already, you've already bought your gravel.
You've already bought it, yeah.
And you didn't give us grain of it.
Yeah, your gravel says keen fire department on the side of it. All right, so I didn't see anything really DPW. Do I have any other questions about you guys?
Well, what was our gravel contract? Do you remember that gravel contract?
I think it was fifty thousand dollars.
That question.
It was, it was over several years.
I don't have a copy of anyone's. But that hasn't come out yet.
We've, we've seen it here. How much are we? It was cheap on sand, yeah, rest of the sand line, your gravel, or, or as far as.
That's where we're gonna set the fire.
Cause those two just run.
Yeah.
Which you can't predict.
You don't have any money, Eric Allen. You don't have any money in the gravel contract. I don't know what the contract was, but he's got eighty thousand dollars in here for sand and gravel, and we've spent close to that already. I can't remember what the contract was, but it was fifty or sixty dollars or whatever.
But it, you don't have a lot of money in your gravel.
No, we haven't. We've spent it as we crushed it.
No.
We haven't done any of that.
You said that they built it, what, what they crushed it. They haven't started crushing it yet. So you, that's money that's been allocated, but that's not.
And what, so what I need to know is what's the number is gonna be for crushing when it comes outside, because I have to hold out another tank.
Understand.
And, and then I have to tell them what the public is here to crush up too.
I understand. So there is no sixty, seventy thousand dollars or eight thousand that we have to spend.
No, but it's, but, but we've come awful close to it. If we, if we come. The contract, and I tell you, I can't remember what it is. The contract that we gave Sunday by the Christmas, when he was on vacation.
Right.
Was, it's between fifty and seventy thousand dollars. I don't have it.
But.
All in the deal is that the money that you're looking for in the gravel line isn't there.
It was if we told them not to crush them.
Yeah.
Exactly, that's what I'm saying.
We have to, next week, we have to have a look.
Yeah, it's just a question. And David, I mean, you should probably start thinking about what would your priority be if your gravel and sand are cut? Do you have roads that you still have to go out with gravel? What are the most important roads around?
You know, the best thing is, in, from last year, I have a hoop of pile of gravel left over.
Yes.
And I'm looking out every day to get rid of it. Not get rid of it, but to put it on the road for, so that's saving me.
Understand.
So if my gravel gets cut a little, I'm not gonna get hurt.
Right.
I just won't have anything left for the spring, that's all.
Right.
So that's what I'm saying.
So we'll talk about, and maybe this is something we just, I need better interview. What's the budget? You're gonna need, our budget amount of gravel, not amount of dollars, but budget amount of gravel you wanna have being able to get in the spring, take care of the mud and all that good stuff. Next year, how much do you have estimated on hand? And then that will tell us how much we really have, what you got going on throughout the year.
Yeah, that, that's what I thought we got to mention, right?
Yes, so there's, but we need to know that. We have to know that because, like I said, we did, I thought a fair job of keeping the budget down last year. Um, but when you throw another one fifty, twenty thousand dollars that we didn't count for anywhere else, start throwing another six thousand dollars on top of that, it's only a million dollar budget.
I know. I could be.
Sorry, man, I just thought. All right, uh, have a good holiday.
How about the eighteen grand you wasted on getting it cleaned out first?
I did it all by now.
You did. It's talented.
I'm talented.
It could have been twenty-five.
All right.
Move around a lot.
Transfer station. Uh, forty-six would be low. Telephone. Why is that? Is that the addition of the?
The I-C-A-M.
The I-C-A-M.
Which actually the I-C-A-M is totally paid itself, self-funded.
Yeah, we count on revenue, so we.
Nope, but I'm just saying.
Overall, they're at thirty-six percent, so probably pretty good there. Do they have any other dues or subscriptions they're required to pay? If it's a copy of Transfer Station Weekly, then that we might forego.
We need at some point, I don't know how old we can go back, but I need another tank for up there of the, uh, scrap metal. Well, we'll, we'll move one of my old tanks into scrap metal and put a new tank somewhere else.
Oh, our house on something like that?
We've always been able to get them going for through NRA, so we're gonna try that again.
Cost estimate, that's what we need to do. All right.
Because my, my scrap metal tank is, it shouldn't be left up there the next time it goes. It is in horrible shape and it's nothing to weld to it. It's, it's just, you know, it's, it's the oldest tank we have.
Okay. Um, and. Solid base recycling, uh. It's probably pretty well low except for paper. That's where we pushed it fifty dollars. We spent four hundred ninety-six.
That's because we used to get paper, paper, and now it's costing us to get rid of it.
So, uh, okay, well, we, and I'm gonna.
But we don't have the tip in.
True. Um, yeah, and this might be a good point. Tim, you wanna talk a little bit about?
I'll, I'll go with the next.
I thought it was good.
And today we got seven hundred and thirty-six dollars for a tub of cans.